Okay, we're recording.
Good evening, everyone. It is May 26, 2021, 6:00 PM. I am Mayor Julia Johnson, and I am calling this City of St. Louis Council Meeting to Order. Please stand with all of me to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. All right, I'll begin with real call, and I will go in order of the wards. So Ward Number One, Councilman Brendan McGoughan.
President.
Thank you. Ward Two, Councilwoman Joellen Kestie.
Present.
Thank you. Ward Three, Councilmember Sarah Diamond.
Present.
Thank you. Ward Four, Councilmember Glenn Allen.
Present.
Thank you. And Ward Five, Councilmember Chuck Owen.
Present.
Thank you. And Ward Six, Councilmember Carl DeYoung.
Present.
Thank you. At Large, Councilmember Kevin Loy.
Here.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I'm rolling right in. We need an approval of the agenda. Do I have an approval?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, I request we approve the agenda one, two, three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Councilwoman McGoughan, a second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilman McGoughan. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. Consent Agenda, Items One through Three. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Or second.
Thank you. So I had a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Right, motion carries. Okay, so we're going to move right into a presentation. I am excited because I had a conversation with them last week that was really quite good. I'm excited to introduce our special guest, Robert Knoll, who is the Senior Government Affairs Representative for PSE, and he is going to provide an update for us. So welcome, Robert. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for having me. Good evening to you and council members. And again, my name's Robert Knoll, and I represent PSE in Skagit and Snohomish Counties, working on local government affairs and community engagement. So it's great to see some familiar faces here, but obviously look forward to getting up to see you all in person again, as that's allowed. Let me share my screen real quick. I have a PowerPoint that I am going to go through real quick. Let's see if I can do this correctly. All right, Mayor, can you give me a thumbs up if you're seeing a storm preparedness? Okay, awesome. Thank you. So great, so this will be about a 10-minute presentation, and since we're since we're mobile here, if anyone wants me to wrap up quicker or slow down, or if you have any questions at any point, please feel to interject. That'll be our virtual cane around the neck from stage left. So here's our agenda for this brief overview. Just today, want to talk a little bit about PSE, just give you kind of a refresher on that, and then talk about our storm preparedness and what we do during storms. It's a good time to do that. You know, obviously, we are coming out of our windy season, but we prepare year-round for these events. So first off, just a little bit about PSE to refresh. PSE is Washington's oldest energy utility. We're a Bellevue-headquartered company with about 3,100 employees. Customer-wise, we have 1.1 million electric customers, and we have 840,000 natural gas customers. So that service area, if you can see that map, it's spread across 10 counties, where we have a mix of electric-only territory, gas-only territory, and dual-fuel territory. So PSE, we work to, you know, meet our customers' energy needs through a balanced investment, energy efficiency with sustainable resources, and with investments in our energy infrastructure. And just want to really emphasize too, if you're familiar on our customer side and business side, the work that we do on energy efficiency, just how critical that is, given that as a utility, we would rather help our customers, both business and commercial, with with efficiency rather than building new power plants. So that's really something that we put a lot of investment in. And then right, so here, PSE in Skagit County, we have 62,000 approximately total electric customers. Of that, about 9,800 are commercial customers. These are your business customers, and then we have 305 industrial customers, so larger industrial manufacturing, you know, things like Janicki and larger industry, and then 51,890 residential customers. And here's my safety moment, which was going to be at the very beginning. We are a power company. We're an energy company. So obviously, safety is really paramount for us. So just a really good reminder, especially in the context of storms. If you see downed if you see down conductor, if you see down utility wire of any kind, you always want to assume that that's energized and stay far away. You want to call 911 or PSE. If you have our app, you can also report on our app. Certainly, do not drive over downed power lines. I've actually seen this happen. So it's not a given that people don't know that. Power lines over cars, another thing, you definitely want to stay in your vehicle if you have power lines over your vehicle. If you have to evacuate, you want to jump away, landing with both feet, and then shuffle away to safety. Okay. So want to go into our storm response and our safety preparedness. We have a lot of great resources for this on our website, especially for city staff, for council members. Our our storm landing page is new this year and has a lot of information about ways that we prepare and ways customers can prepare in storm situations. It also includes for first responders, it includes our entire Energy System Restoration Plan. So everything I'm going to talk about moving forward this evening is spelled out actually in greater detail and available to the public. So I've gone through that page by page so that you don't have to, but certainly it's a good resource. So as far as our readiness infrastructure during a storm, we actually have we have over 900 employees that have emergency response roles. So as an energy provider during storms, we are really an all-hands-on-deck organization. We have seven regional storm bases that manage our storm response, one of which is in Skagit. And we have dedicated 24/7, you know, on-call teams. We also have dedicated communications teams. When a storm reaches a certain threshold, we have an emergency coordination center that is activated. So so the storm bases, they manage the rapid response assessment and repairs. They dispatch our workers, and then our ECC, for example, communicates internally, and their job is to triage and to to coordinate our repairs across the system. So the other thing we do, as far as readiness infrastructure for staying ready for storms, we do annual training and exercises. Prior to storm season, we partner with our first responders on this, and then we do after-action reports and updates that inform our investment in our system. Okay, so next, I just want to talk real broad overview, how we restore power. When your power goes out, you know, PSE has a two-tiered system of restoration. So the first is a systems prioritization. So that's the larger, our infrastructure and what we prioritize when we have an outage. So number one would be our transmission system. So for those of you who you know, aren't as familiar with the power system, you know, our transmission are the long-distance systems that bring power from our generation assets, either regionally or beyond, to the regional level. So that is critical infrastructure that can be on the order of, you know, hundreds of thousands of people on a transmission system. So that always is the first system prioritization. The second is substations, and substations really can affect, you know, up to thousands of customers at a time, but this is a critical part that we work to energize as soon as we have transmission backup and running so that we can prioritize that next level of of the grid. So and then that third systems prioritization is distribution. Distribution is what you see in your neighborhood. It is what's delivering power for the most part to your house, to your small and medium-sized businesses, and that is where, you know, our restoration goes after that. In kind of broad overview, it's the most customers restored first, and so on and so forth. So the next kind of tier of prioritization is the customer prioritization. So we obviously have we prioritize critical infrastructure. So when we are looking at in the context of our systems prioritization, we also have, you know, situational awareness of hospitals, of airports, of waste and water treatment, pumping stations, and critical community infrastructure, for example, emergency response facilities, 911 call centers. And we work to update those with your city staff and on the regional level so that we have good situational awareness about that at all times, and in the event of any emergency, especially like a storm. And then, again, as far as the customer prioritization, largest number of customers first. When we have a distribution system or a substation that we can flip the switch on and get thousands of people on, that's going to be the first in line for restoration. So a couple of things about our restoration is that you know, when you see PSE trucks out, you might see three different types of trucks, or ranging from, you know, the responsive vehicles to assessment to the bucket trucks with workers that are actually restoring your lines. Just important to remember that, you know, those trucks will kind of they may come and go based on what role they have. So if you see a PSE truck come by and leave, you know, they may be ordering equipment, they may need more crew, the outage may take more time. They may have cleared the right-of-way, for example, and then may be coming back to an outage after clearing other right-of-way because we have to clear right-of-way before even restoring power. That's our duty for right-of-way. Yeah, and then the other thing, just we, you know, if you have questions, if you see a PSE truck leave, and you still have no power, still feel free to report your outage, report it again. No problem with doing that. And then certainly for for elected officials, for council members, and for you, Mayor, always feel free to to pick up the phone and contact me. I'll be your point of contact in these events. A couple more things customers should know, council members and mayor, you should know. We actually, we really only have two ways to know if you don't have power. You know, we're very, we're far away from a completely smart grid. So we do have some situational awareness in our system, obviously, at the larger level. But this is a thing that I learned coming, being new to the utility industry, you know, if my power doesn't if my power goes out, there's nobody in a, you know, operations area with the wall full of screens saying, you know, Robert's power is out. So it's really critical to remember to report your outage. That the app is probably the best way to do that, given that as long as folks have access to sell, as long as your cell phone is charged and are able to do that, the other way is our 888 number, so to calling us at PSE. And again, if you call and you still don't have power, you know, we still want to hear from you, so call us back. Use your app, social media too. We're very responsive on that. And then I apologize, most importantly, you guys, everyone, please feel free to contact me. Okay. This is a little bit about our website. So our website has been updated recently. Like I said, our storm landing page, our outage map is really helpful. You actually have a lot of information on our PSE outage map, such as estimated time to restoration, number of customers out. You know, that is, you know, obviously, a great resource. Oops, excuse me, I'm trying to scroll my notes. Our PSE app as well, I would recommend downloading that. You can set notifications, for example, if your power is out, and you were in a long-term outage, you decide to go to a friend's house, or maybe even a hotel or a restaurant in a town that has power, you can set your app to send you a notification when your power is back on. So just overall, so I'm going to kind of rush a little bit. I'm looking at the time. You know, we do provide a ton of information on the website. We do our best with social media and Twitter, but certainly I always want to be a resource for you as well if you have questions during a storm or outage event. So finally, just a reminder to be prepared. We always have besides a safety culture at PSE, just reminding our customers to be prepared. We have storm events that can be widespread in our territory, and it can be difficult. We know how difficult it is to be without power. You know, this storm season, for example, with COVID, with a storm roll on my team and working with our operations and crews, you know, we had to figure out how to do this remotely, and in some cases with storm roll employees having their power out as well. So we certainly understand how difficult it is to be without power, but always want to reiterate how important it is to be prepared. So you know, having an emergency and preparedness kit, always having a backup charger for your phone, plenty of batteries. I like to say, this is kind of a, I've given a few of these presentations, and one thing I like to note is, this is a, you know, do-as-I-say-not-as-I-do moment, because the first time my power went out here, I did not know where my flashlight was. So, you know, it's actually a good reminder that I took to heart as well. So lastly, I just want to talk just a little bit, since I'm here tonight. PSE, you know, I think, you know, as a company, we've really prioritized showing up in the community in in response to COVID. You know, we have all, I think we're all optimistic at this point, hoping to be coming out of this, but it has affected, you know, us as a company, but more importantly, our customers. So one of the great things that we launched in March last year, with permission from the UTC, the Utilities and Transportation Commission, is a crisis-affected customer assistance program. As you know, a lot of people have been, you know, have had lost jobs, have had their hours decreased, you know, businesses have closed, do the shutdowns, and folks have been unable to work. So we showed up for our customers with a program that they can, that customers can receive up to $1,000 credit on their energy bill. So that has worked out. This number is actually, I think, from a month or two ago, but it was 11 million in total customer assistance, and that was 139,000 in Skagit County in direct aid. So if you have any questions about that program, certainly want to share with that. But something that we have done to to stand with our customers in this time, in addition to some of the direct support that we've done for organizations in Skagit County. So with that, I see I'm at 17 minutes, so I hope I hope that wasn't too much of a long-winded presentation, but happy to answer any questions that you may have. This final picture is our Upper Baker Dam and the Baker River Hydroelectric Project. So thanks for listening, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Robert. Is there anybody who has questions for Robert? I have to tell you, Robert, I'm kind of curious about individuals who are ADA and maybe have special equipment that they need, you know, for their care. Is that recorded somewhere, or can that be recorded somewhere? So PSE is aware of that?
It can. You know, that is a great, that is a great operations question. That hasn't come up for me in particular. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly what we can do on that, but I'd be happy to follow up. But that's a great question.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I would like to know, if anything, how PSE handles that.
Absolutely.
So is anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Hi, Robert. Thank you for the presentation. I was wondering what your guys' response plan is for ransomware attacks, like what happened to Colonial Pipeline?
Wow, that's a great, that's a great question. You know, that is, that is something I think that we are kind of ongoing looking at with a company. I think every company needs to be vigilant about this, given what happened to, you know, a large-scale energy asset. That's another thing I would have to follow up on as far as what our company is doing in particular, but I certainly understand the concern about vulnerability of energy assets, including the electrical grid and our generation assets, as far as that is concerned.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, if there is no other questions, and Robert, we'll let you go. We'll let you cut and run. But thank you so much for giving the presentation. Really have enjoyed having you here. I realize it's been over a year, but boy, COVID sure messed up what we know to be the norm, right, our schedules?
Absolutely, and I available for, I'll follow up with my contact information. Really nice to be with you all, and feel free to reach out anytime.
Great. Thank you, Robert. Have a nice Memorial Weekend.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, so we will move right into staff reports, and I will begin with Fire Chief Frank Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. Just wanted to do a couple of shout-outs for our presentation that we had on Friday with 100-year anniversary and Chief Klinger's retirement. Makes you proud to be a part of a community where everybody comes together for such a great cause. From, you know, our own staff here with Nathan Salsina, Kevin Keskey, and Brent Schelfelbein for getting us tables and chairs and PA systems, and Bill and Glenn for supporting the IT part of it with audiovisual stuff and and all the electronics and stuff we needed to local businesses, Dusty's Detail. We didn't even reach out to them for the seagrave that we were pulling out of the museum, and they showed up and and made that thing sparkle, being at over 100 years old. What an amazing community and a lot of community pride and just nice to be a part of something like that. COVID numbers continue to drop. We're not too many weeks ago, we were over 300 cases per 100,000. Now, we're told that by the end of the week, we'll be below 150. So things are starting to look good. Vaccinations are readily available at all of our pharmacies. Fairgrounds vaccination site will close up shop June 4th, but they're going to continue to do mobile vaccinations for those that need them and pop-up things like they did this last week in Skagit Speedway. But other than that, just what an amazing turnout we had this Friday, and thank you to all of you involved.
All right, thank you, Frank. Yeah, and I guess with those pop-ups, it's been quite successful, and we are, as a state, I think, well over 50%. So I think the governor said 70%. We can open sooner, so hopefully that'll happen, right? Thank you. Okay, so moving on to Police Chief Lynn Tucker.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just two things tonight. First off is we have the Stop the Hate protest that's going on, starting at Hammer Heritage Square there, I think at noon on Saturday, the 29th. Dan McElrath will be in to monitor that. I will be monitoring it from a trail in Utah. And having my phone handy, just in case anybody calls, but good luck trying to find me in my phone. And the only other thing I've got is a big project that Doug sat in on yesterday was our initial review of the 12 or 13 legislative bills that went through the latest legislative session that affect us in a lot of ways. We've actually started experiencing some of the ways that's affecting us in how we handle people with mental health holds and kind of taking more of a hands-off approach in that. After 20, well, 30 years of doing this job, we are changing the way we're doing business. A lot of people are up in arms over it. There's a lot of good things, I think, that are going to come from it, but there's a lot of holes in it that we didn't get much guidance from our leaders in Olympia. So we're still trying to figure out how this is all going to work out. But we got some good folks working on it, and we're hopefully going to put together a all-encompassing general order to our folks, because to complicate this whole process is we are moving into a new policy and procedure manual. So some of the policy and procedures that we're going to have to change that are fundamental to what we do are, we're changing right now. So we're going to have to give an order to everybody to say, these are the new legislative priorities and guidelines we're being given. This is how we're going to do business from here on out. And then as soon as our policy and procedure provider, Lexipol, gives us their best guidance, and probably had Nikki gets a chance to look at it, then we'll integrate it into our new policy manual as soon as we get that. So there's a lot of things we're working on. I'm going to be out for the weekend, and Dan's going to be around a bit this weekend. But if you have any questions, don't hesitate to email either one of us or both of us, and we can kind of give you a 411 on some of those legislative things that have come down for us. Otherwise, once we get our heads around it, we'll try to schedule a Public Safety Committee meeting to pass that on through the Public Safety Committee, and I'll talk to the mayor and Doug about that. So you've kind of got all I've got tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Lynn. Moving on to the Director of Building Improvement, John Coleman.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I do not have a whole lot to talk to you about tonight, except one minor thing that I thought was worth mentioning. We're issuing a notice of application for a subdivision application on the Carrigal Road. And just want to remind the council, if you start getting calls about people asking you about a specific project like this coming up for your own, I guess, protection, and for lack of better words, like, you can send them to us. That way, you don't run into any issues with ex parte. That way you don't run into any issues with ex parte communication or anything like that. Nikki can kind of help fill in the gaps on that, but just a reminder of people call you about a specific project that's going to be coming to the council at some point. Just send it to the planning department and there will be public hearings on this project in the future. We haven't decided when that's going to be. Right now it's just a notice that the application is out. And that's all I have for the council right now. Thanks.
All right, thank you, John. Good reminder as well. So Mark Freiberger is out this evening and I don't know that there was anybody here to represent the Public Works Department. So we will move on to the Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
Other than just the normal day to day stuff, we are still working on preparing documents and data for the cemetery management software implementation. And also working on an ethernet cable infrastructure upgrade in public safety section of the building. And lots of tech stuff for new hires and replacing equipment just on schedule. That's about it.
All right, thank you, Bill. Finance Manager Jill Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Just have a couple of items. This week is the deadline for filing the city's twenty twenty comprehensive financial report. So we are wrapping up the financial statements, which include some new items regarding COVID grant funding and a few other regulatory items. So once we file that and sign off on the financial statements, we will send out a copy to City Council for their review. And then we have the American Rescue Plan. We are working and have prepared all the required documentation to qualify the city to receive funds as soon as they are made available by the state. Cedar Woolley is considered a non entitlement unit due to our population, so accordingly, we will be required to work through the Department of Commerce to receive funding, which is what we did with the CARES funds. And the original federal estimate is that two point six million might be available for the city for qualified items. And otherwise, we are working on getting ready to welcome Debbie Burton as the new Finance Director on June seventh. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
That's very good. Thank you. Good information. City Attorney Nikki Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything of interest to the group this evening.
How's your new position going as partner?
You know what? It's going very well and it's great to be able to learn new things. When you've been here for a while, you realize that you don't know what you don't know. And so it's actually been really great. I like learning new things.
Well, good. All right. Thank you, Nikki. Didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
Oh, no, it's all good.
City Supervisor Doug Merriman.
Thank you, Mary Johnson. Under people tonight, some of these things will be a little repeat of what you've heard from other department heads, but on June seventh, we will be welcoming Debbie onboard as our Finance Director. Everybody's pretty excited to have her in here and we've kind of got our list of things for her and help her out to hit the ground running. So she is on with us tonight, listening in. So Debbie, I think you've heard it a couple of times now. We're really excited about you coming onboard. One of the other things I'm working on right now with John Coleman is the Building Inspector position. As you know, Tony Niskanen retired, but he still can't quite get away. He's working part time for us covering until we get a replacement. So thank you to Tony, but John and I did go over the job description. We're doing a, taking this opportunity to do some upgrades in that Building Inspector, kind of building official position to work on that and kind of looking at things in the planning department as far as coordinating workflow and things like that. Whenever you have a change, it's always a good time to look at things and get everybody's input on what things they see that could help us to our business even better. As far as land goes, the Row family, they are the ones who own the property on Reed Street. It's a piece of park property that we've been working on. They, right before we got everything ready, they were going on a family trip, so we're just waiting for them to get back and we're going to be signing all the documents and closing on that property just as soon as they're back. We've got everything into the title company, so if you've been tracking on that, that's where we stand on that one today. Another item under land is the library project. We are down to the final nickels and dimes on getting it closed up. Sometimes you can get ninety percent of the project done, but it's the last ten percent that takes ninety percent of the work to actually get all the documents closed. So we have some as builds and some different things. We're trying to get a handle on and get that stuff closed that. So from a construction standpoint, we're ninety nine point nine nine percent there. We're just hoping we can get that last one one hundredth of a percent down here, probably in the next week or so. So it's nice to have that project coming to a close. Money wise, we're just continuing to monitor the budget. As you heard from Jill, we're looking at the American Rescue Plan funds and making sure we're set up and ready to go, so that is quick. Other things I would like to do is we do have a finance committee. It would be nice to schedule that committee. It's been quite a while since that's been done. We have some good things to talk about. We have lots of documents to sign still that the Finance Committee usually does each council meeting. So we'll get caught up on those, but I'll be calling either myself or the mayor will be calling the the members of the Finance Committee to see if we can schedule a date and get together for some good stuff. And that's all I have for my report tonight.
All right, thank you, Doug. Okay, and moving on to council members, Councilman Brendan McGoffin.
I think you met him here. I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Joelle Nkasty.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was out working at the cemetery and I wanted to compliment Nathan and his crew on how fantastic it looks for this Memorial Day weekend.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sarah Diamond.
Good evening. I just want to thank everybody for the involvement that was had for the celebration for both Chief Klinger and one hundred years at the Cedar Woolley Fire Department. It was amazing to be present there to see all the generations of people come through that were a part of the department or had been touched by the department, community members that had been directly affected by fire or an emergency situation that were, you know, attesting to the, to the great things that the Fire Department and the community and the city itself has done for them. And so it was really great to listen to some of those stories and talk to some of those people. So I just want to say so I wanted to pass that along and let everybody, you know, know that that those are great things that are said about our community and and everybody should be really proud of that. Two things that kind of have come up in my ward and both related to the library. One is people are very, very anxious around here as to when it could be open. And do we have it? I know that we're working on the final steps. Is there kind of an estimated timeframe at all?
Yeah, I am, I believe that Jane is looking to open it. There's going to be a soft opening next week. That's what she's talking about doing and last time that she and I talked, she was saying that she was going to set up appointments if people wanted to make appointments to come in. She was still going to do curbside for those who were not comfortable. But yeah, but next week she's going to do, try to do a soft opening. So that's, that's who we're at, kind of what Doug was sharing. There's still just those little, little pieces that just need to be put into place and once they're completed.
Yeah, the community around here is really, really excited for that. So I think that'll be great. The other thing that goes hand in hand with that being within walking distance is, and I wasn't involved in the library to begin with, being a new council member. But I have been approached by some people that are property owners in that general area close to it, and they were wondering if there is any city plans to be updating the sidewalks that are in and around the areas coming into the library. Strictly because they do intend to be using them more, whether they be adding sidewalks, for example, on Borseth. Or, you know, just kind of some, some maintenance situations that might need to be coming up because there will be increased traffic for that.
Yeah, really good questions. And so that's something that we can actually take to Mark Freiberger to see what's in his plan. Or even Doug, I know you and Mark sit down and talk about what's happening frequently and with regards to his projects, has, has he mentioned?
We've had some general conversations about sidewalks and things. There still needs to be some planning and how we actually fund those and do that. One of the things I know that we have coming up, we are just now putting into the plan is there is the gravel piece of Eastern that just goes to the north of the library and we're going to be paving that in our paving plan this year. So we're just starting to start kind of where the library building it is and start working our way out and see if we can start improving some of those pathways that come into the library through the neighborhoods like that.
Okay, okay. Perfect. And if they, you know, one, one person in particular was interested in the fact that, you know, not knowing how far down the road this could be, if he was interested in, in doing something himself and what if that's something that he'd be able to do and who he needs to talk to directly to kind of work into those steps, can I direct him to you?
Yeah, that would be fun.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it was the mayor or myself, but, but yeah, we can make sure that information gets out and get to the right people there.
Perfect, perfect. I just want to make sure that he's, he's comfortable with, with where he's going, whether he chooses to make directions on his own, kind of depends on what, what the city's plans are.
Yeah, and the Public Works Department really is, you know, that's, that's where he wants to, I think, put his focus if he's going to be talking about sidewalks and other things, streets and other things that may be part of what he's looking to do.
Correct, yeah. He's, he's just looking to possibly, if it's, if it's possible, you know, putting, having sidewalk, didn't know if sidewalks were going to be kind of taken care of or put in place in some of the side streets that don't have them as part of the neighboring plan with the library. Or if that wasn't included, if he was going to be able to do something like that on his own.
Right. Yeah, you know, sir, I, so down on Borseth and whatnot, when it's a neighborhood like that, oftentimes that is the responsibility of each of the homeowners.
Correct, right.
To do the sidewalks.
Right, and I know that he's fully aware of that. He just wasn't sure if, you know, if that was go, if it was part of the developmental plan of the library in and of itself, simply because of the traffic that it could create. And, and in all transparency, he's a landlord that rents this property out. And so he's not, he's not here to see it every day. This was, you know, his, his question posed to me.
Well, good questions and certainly great conversation and appreciate bringing this forward because I'm sure that there's others like him who are wondering, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Some people, you know, they're, they're interested in creating some improvements, but if it's in the city plans, you know, it might be something that they're willing to hold hold off on or work with the city to do, you know, together, but not me not being involved, having not been involved with the library and everything going on, being new. I definitely just told them I would follow up on that and see what we could, what we can find out and what to do and get them the right contacts, so.
Oh, absolutely. And thank you for doing that. And yeah, like I said, great questions. Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Ward four, Councilman Glenn Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wonders of wonders. I'm just curious. I've talked to you, Madam Mayor, and I've talked to Doug. And I think this, and I ran against the big pay raise a couple of years ago, but I think I would love to have included on the June agenda something addressing city council wages, possibly some changes in wages for you. Nikki can, you know, do it out. As far as I'm, as far as I know, Brendan, Chuck and I would not receive any raise. You can't vote yourself a raise. That if we don't take care of some wages, no council members will get a raise until two thousand twenty six. And I don't think we've had them for like thirteen years now. So anyway, if, if we can include that, you know, some information, we don't have to vote on it, but just some information comparatives, not with Bellevue, you know, all that stuff, but you know, I, I think it needs to be addressed before the election. So anyway, I'll get out of your hair on that, okay?
Well, as, as we talked about at the council retreat, that is the working retreat, that is something that actually I brought forward. And we are going to talk about that. It's going to be a part of possibly the budget, again, the conversation. Doug and I have not had an opportunity to discuss it, but Doug, did you want to weigh in on that?
And thank you, Glenn, for your call on that item. It is one of those things that there are a couple of different methods you can go about doing it, but I think we have some new council members and just in case you didn't know, when a raise is voted by a council, no one that voted that raise in can actually get that raise unless they run again, when they're reelected, then it does kick in. So there's some nuances and things like that. Perhaps we could put a an agenda item on the schedule as Councilmember Allen suggested that just has some information so you know how the process works. And I can even get the information when the last raises were and just see how those numbers work. We can maybe throw a dart at a couple cities and see what they do, but at least get some information together to have a good conversation on it.
Right.
Thank you, Doug.
If I could weigh in as well, as you've indicated, there's multiple ways of establishing salaries for elected officials, one of which is, of course, the vote by the council members. The other that's provided for by law is, is a salary commission, which of course then does put the salary into effect right away. But one of the things that I've seen recently that I can't find a reason to object to is kind of a hybrid approach where the council votes in the raise, but you sort of have an ad hoc community committee that meets with a couple of the council members and goes over comps that are provided by staff and makes a recommendation to council so that then it's not council making the decision itself. It is made with that community input that looks a bit more like a salary commission, but is kind of a hybrid. So I've never seen it before, but I did just have a city propose it and I can't see a reason why I think it's problematic, so.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen, one more time. I, I'm not after this for myself. I'm a one and done term, but I, I'm looking forward to the future of the city council and you know, possibly if they're working at wages eighteen years old, maybe something is not correct there. That, you know, that's where I'm coming from. I, I'd love all the input the city can give and your staff, okay? Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Oh, you, you're welcome, Glenn. And I know exactly where you're coming from. Like you said, we've had conversation on this and it is, I know it's something that's kind of on your heart for your fellow council members. I think it's great. It's great. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Councilman Chuck Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have a couple of things. I had the chance to go by the museum and I picked up a couple of, of books. And I'd like to recommend them to the, to the council or anyone else that wants them. And I want, you can't see it, but, but the one is, is called The Cigarette Diaries. It's about pilot that was shot down in World War Two and, and the survivors on that plane and, and their the things they went through in a prison camp. It's really a good book. It's, it's about fifteen dollars. So and the other one is called The Red Roof. It's about Northern State. It's kind of documentary and I think Brandon's mother is the author of that book. Exactly. And I, I identified with a lot of the, the nurses and, and the patients. Exactly. And I I identified with a lot of the the nurses and and the patients. In that book because I worked there in my young years, so. I would like to recommend that to to the council and anybody else that they can recommend it to, and it'd be good for the. Museum, though. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Um, and I've read Under the Red Roof, and it is very, very good. And there's a follow up to that, is there not? Brendan and Joellen?
There's an updated version. That's all I can speak to right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, there is. And we have autographed copies for both the new one and the old one at the museum.
Fantastic. Thank you, Joellen. Okay, moving on to Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Good evening. Just wanted to echo some of the things previously said. I really enjoyed the centennial celebration for fighters and paramedics. What a great celebration and a wonderful send off. That definitely honored our fire department and paramedics and Chief Cleinger. Thank you for allowing that to go on. And it was great to see the old pump truck to all the way to the lifelike, the modern technology that is being used, so. It was just very inspiring, especially the words from the executive director from Camp Phoenix for all the. Time and money that our fire department spends with those children. And of course, it was good to see Aaron Berg again and listen to him rib the the chief as well. I see we have a board member from the Lions Club here, so I wanted to thank the Lions Club for cleaning up Highway Twenty near Fruitdale. The walking club went went by them and cheered them on. Also, Chief Tucker, thank you for including me in the mass casualty incident scenario. Learned a lot from Lieutenant Dan and also with the firefighters as well, especially with communication. And I just wanted to give an accolade to the style of communication and education that went from. Staff officers to mid-officers all the way down to the rank and file, how how that was flowing freely back and forth. And everyone was working toward the same goal, which was the safety of of those victims. And it was very eerie to be in City Hall and roleplay a. Mass casualty incident with a barricaded shooter in the mayor's office. But you got to train for those things. And then finally, I just wanted to wish everyone a safe Memorial Day. And do participate in some of the ceremonies that are allowed on Monday and take good care.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Kevin Loy.
I have nothing, Mayor, but would it be okay if I asked Chief Tucker a question?
Oh, absolutely.
Hey, Chief, you know, you're you're talking about all the changes that are coming. And it's all all going to be confusing because you, like you say, you have no guidance. Are you are all the departments in Skagit County talking to each other? So it'll be similar or everybody on their own?
Yes, we are talking together. We've made that a point from the very beginning. And one step beyond that, WASPIC, the Washington State Chiefs and Sheriff's Association. Has been involved in lobbying efforts during the course of this and been keeping us updated. So not just our local agencies, the police departments in both Skagit and Island County have been working together. But basically statewide. So we've been looking at all this and actually several of us are in the same. We use this, we're going to the same Lexipol Policy and Procedure Manual, so we've actually going to have the root. Policy procedures set in place by the same entity. And we're talking and we're trying to get all of our procedures to kind of match, so if we have an incident in Burlington, which we had tonight. That flowed over into Cedar Woolley and that we are all doing the same thing.
Well, thank you. That that gives me more confidence knowing you're all working together.
And we've, in typical governmental fashion, we were given the mandate that these, all of these new things are coming down on us as of July twenty fifth of this year. And the guidance from the state is due from the state in June of two thousand twenty-two. So one year after we've already implemented all of the things we're supposed to be doing, we will get the official guidance from the state of Washington. I don't know what to tell you there.
Well, everybody's working to get better. That makes me feel better.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question.
Anything else, Kevin?
Nope, that's it. I'm working on some stuff for a meeting or two down the road.
Okay. Thank you. So I suppose all of you have seen that the farmer's market is open. It opened up last Wednesday, so this Wednesday is its second. Time open and it's a lot of fun. If you haven't been down there yet, be sure to go and support them. I also want to thank, gosh, Chief Wagner. Megan, also Gerald Chandler. There were so many people that actually brought about, yeah, they brought about some really good information that we were able to share and with the public and. Actually to help celebrate the chief and it was an amazing celebration. It really was. And as I said. When I was giving my speech, that that's something that usually, those kinds of celebrations usually happen on the East Coast, that formality, it's just, which is to me is just. It's moving. It's very, very moving and it also makes us really respect. Those situations and the people who serve. So thank you, Frank. I know that you worked really hard on it as well, but it was a team effort. It was really great. So thank you. And and did you see where the chief made the paper again yesterday, front page?
Yeah, I actually sent him a picture of it over to Twist. And he was just as embarrassed as he was on Friday. He, as we know, he doesn't like those kind of accolades, but deservedly so. And and you brought up Megan and her team. She kind of headed up this whole process for last probably five, six months. And the amount of time and effort and organization that she did with the historical stuff and getting those pictures together and. Just phenomenal. And she set us up for success in the future as well because she's also organized a lot of those things by decade and by chief and. And just did a phenomenal job. So a lot of kudos to her and the the committee that set all that stuff up.
Exactly.
On top of that, we also did some food and stuff for some of the people from out of town that afternoon afterwards. And kudos to Cascade Pizza, the this volunteer association went to pick that stuff up and they wouldn't even let them pay for it, so. Again, that that community involvement and appreciation.
Wow, that's that's phenomenal. Yeah, so I'm curious, the picture board that actually Megan put together, is that going to be framed and put up somewhere? Because that is really well done.
They are planning on putting it up in the quarters over here at Station One, from what I understand.
Yeah. So I would encourage council, if you haven't yet, or if you didn't have a chance to see it on Friday or didn't have an opportunity to attend on Friday, to check out the. The storyboard because it really gives a good overview of where we've been over the last one hundred plus years, so. Yeah, thank you. Um, I am putting together currently, kind of changing, changing gears here, I'm currently putting together the policies for our opening. I am, I was hoping to have it done last week. Glad I waited. There's been other information that has come out and so. I guess I don't need to be in a hurry, but I am going to have that together and I will have that out to the council the same time that I have that out to staff so that you are aware of what we are doing here. We're still under Phase Three, but the CDC has said that if you're fully vaccinated. And actually, they want you to wait till two weeks after you're fully vaccinated. You can actually take off your mask. So that's good news for all vaccinated individuals. A reminder that there will be no council sessions, actually the council work sessions, which are our first Wednesday of the month for June, July and August. It's a policy that we've had in place here for, I don't know how many years, for as long as I've been on the board, on the council. So we'll only be meeting twice a month, both in June, July and August, and so our next meeting, of course, then would be June ninth. And then one last thing, I want to give everybody a heads up regarding. House Bill fifteen ninety, which I just became aware of a couple of days ago. This is something that I. Have been finding out more information about. I've actually had discussion with Doug regarding it. We're going to bring the information to you come the ninth of June. And I'm going to have Doug present that so that you have all the nuances regarding it, but it has to do with the. One tenth of one percent sales tax that has been offered to this, this actually to the cities and the county. The reason that I'm asking you to consider it is because if we if we pass by it or choose not to do it, then that money will go to the county. And I feel that it's really important that you have that discussion and that opportunity to determine where you want that money to go, if you want it to stay here in the city or go out. So we can have that discussion June ninth, but that is House Bill fifteen ninety, if you want to check that out. And I think that that is all I have right now, so we will move on. To public comments. It is seven oh one, and if you would like to make public comment, please state your name and your address and try to keep your comments to. Three minutes. Is there anybody for public comment? Okay, hearing none. Still seven oh one, and I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Now on to unfinished business and Mr. Coleman, you are up. Amendments to the Shoreline Master Program, Ordinance nineteen eighty-three dash twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, so Mayor mentioned a second read on updates to our Shoreline Master Program. This is a required update to the Shoreline Master Program. And the Department of Ecology made some funds available for us to do this update. I got one call from a council member asking. Where are the actual changes? They went through the several hundreds of pages and it was actually hard to find some of the some of the changes. And so I appreciate the efforts going through. The the changes are non-substantive for the most part and. So there's 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 not a lot of changes. So if you have any further questions about it, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
So are there any questions for Mr. Coleman? Okay, hearing none. John, if you have nothing else to add, I'm going to ask for the motion to see if there is a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen eighty-three dash twenty-one. An ordinance for the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington, adopting amendments to the Shoreline Master Program.
Mayor, I'd be glad to make that motion.
Thank you. Sir, a second?
I'm the bonehead that couldn't find the changes.
Councilmember DeYoung, second.
All right, we had a motion by Councilman Loy, seconded by Councilman DeYoung. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I only heard three ayes. Is are there no more ayes?
I'll do an aye.
Okay, so any any oppose, same sign? Hearing none, motion passes. You do need to chime in, council. We do need to hear you for the record, so.
Aye.
All right, and then moving on to the updates to the City Council Governance Handbook, this is new business. And this actually is the discussion that we had May seventh, where it was brought up by a couple of different council members that they were wanting to. Maintain the six P M. Time as well as. As well as ending the time of adjournment meetings. They asked that be removed. So the way that this is going to work is that in order to. Make this happen, we do have to first pass a resolution and the resolution will adopt the updated Council Governance Handbook. And then after that is passed, we will move into an ordinance that adopts the changes to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. So we actually have two, two. Votes here in order to make these changes happen. I don't know if you have any questions or if you have any comments regarding this. We had a pretty good discussion on May seventh.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman DeYoung.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to make sure I heard you correctly that there would be no end time to the meetings. And I think we had a discussion of the history of doing that before, so I'm. Interested in. Why we're changing from a two hour meeting or two and a half hour meeting to something that's open ended.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, council, council. Go ahead, Joanna, Joellen.
I brought that up because I felt that we were here to do a job and I did not want a time limit every, oh, it's two hours here. We need to make another motion to extend it. Let's just get our business done and and then move on.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Any questions?
Madam, Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen, I agree with Councilwoman Kesskey. You know, I don't want meetings to go till one o'clock, but I don't think Robert's rules of order, you know, or we should limit ourselves to the two hours. If it's two and a half hours, that's what it's going to take. That's my opinion. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts?
Oh, good.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I'm okay with eliminating the deadline. I think we're doing a good job staying within kind of the three hours, even with the long meetings. And I'm okay, just like you all said, getting the job done. So this man, but.
All right, thank you. Is that helpful, Councilman DeYoung? Does that answer, you had a good question there. Does that answer your question?
Oh, hi. Yeah, I I was really interested in some previous historical aspects from. Councilmember Loy and Councilmember Allen, who had brought some things up at the strategic meeting where. But I think if we're all committed, it's this group to get the business done as as Councilmember Casti's rollick will put. And work on the business of the city. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, if there is no more discussion regarding this, then do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number ten seventy twenty-one? Which would it ups, it is, what this does is it adapts, adapts the updated City Council Governance Handbook. Wow, I had trouble getting that one out, didn't I? So.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Kestie.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number one zero seven zero dash two one.
Do I have a second? A motion made by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the ordinance nineteen eighty-four twenty-one to adapt the changes to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. This is a formality here. Do do we have any discussion or do I have a mo?
This is Councilmember Diamond. I'll carry that motion.
Thank you. Sir, a second?
Councilwoman Kestie, second.
Okay. All right, I had a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'm sorry, Councilman DeYoung, I actually need you to, it has to be on the record, so I need you to say yea or nay.
I'm sorry for didn't come across. I think the mic was on. Yeah, yeah. Yay, I I support.
Okay, all right, thank you. Those oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Well, that is it. That completes our business for the night. Our next meeting, as I stated, is June ninth at six P M. And I really wish all of you a wonderful, safe weekend. Enjoy the Memorial Weekend and we'll see you here in two thousand. we'll see you here in two weeks. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, good night. Night, goodbye.